My pleasure, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also would like to welcome everybody this evening, and at this point in time, we'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gerhardt for a special presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, we have another motion to go first. I'm two steps ahead of myself. We have three board members that had conferences and meetings they had to do tonight, so they could not be here. So, we have a motion to allow Beth Prindall to sign all documents approved this evening on behalf of the Board President due to the absence of the Board President and the Vice President. And I want to thank Nancy for stepping in and being the lead head honcho tonight to get us through the agenda itself. So, we're looking for approval of a motion and a second to allow Beth to sign the documents.
Shall I make a motion to allow Beth to sign the documents?
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those likes, there you go. Alright, now the rest is yours.
Okay, and at this time, Gerhardt has a question to make.
We have, at Beech Grove Middle School, had a long partnership with the Beech Grove Fire Department, and I invite Mrs. Ott tonight to say a few words about that partnership and what a great thing it's been for our community.
The partnership that we've had, thank you for allowing me to do this tonight, the partnership we've had with the Beech Grove Fire Department, we have now completed 23 years of CPR certification training with the American Heart Association. And this has been such a powerful partnership, because not only have we trained thousands of students over the years, but we're also including our staff, our bus drivers, our maintenance crew, possibly board members, our principals, our teachers. This has just been an incredible opportunity for all. And so, I'd like to take the time right now to share just very quickly a piece of the history of this program. Gentlemen, if I could have you all join me up front, Your Honor, including you, because Mayor Buckley, it all started with you. If you'll please come forward. Now typically in the classroom, they just pile right on in. The fire trucks are still running, and I recall, oh, please join me up here, please. I recall at times, we would receive phone calls at the middle school from neighbors saying, "What's going on at the middle school? There are fire trucks there." Well, it's CPR training going on, because the fire trucks would be there for a couple hours at a time. We would like to thank you for all the years of service, and Chief Cheshire and Chief Pierce. It all started with Chief Buckley, I still want to call him Chief, years ago, and we'll hear about that in just a moment. But we'd like to present you with this plaque, and we hope that you can find a little corner of your world to hang it. And we appreciate so much everything that you continue to do. Our program is intact. It will continue this year with Alice Williams in health classes as well. Chief Buckley, Mayor Buckley, Chief Buckley and I taught fire safety training together, and he would bring in his melted light bulbs, you remember those, and he asked a question one day and said, "What else can we do to have the fire department involved in our school?" And we brainstormed, and we came up with CPR training. And from that point on, it continued. And so, Mayor Buckley, in recognition of your support in initiating this program 23 years ago, we want to say thank you very, very much. You're a very, very special person to this community. You have spanned so many years with this program as also the fire chief, and now as our mayor, and thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
I know that Randall will be arriving soon. He's our trainer right now, and so we'd like to present him with a plaque as well. But we also have another original trainer with us, Michael Goines, and Rob was also one of the previous trainers. And so, they are going to be able to enjoy how much we adore you guys and how important you are to our students, just with something small there. But Tom Gerhardt, my principal, will you please come forward?
Sure.
You have given out thousands of plaques over the years to students and to staff. Last year, you made such a difference in a young man's life. He had a medical issue, and he was not able to complete CPR training. And I came to you in lunch in the cafeteria and said, "Mr. Gerhardt, can we allow him to attend a staff training?" And that was almost unheard of, because as we train our staff with the adults, they fill up very quickly. You allowed him to have a spot, and you don't know what a difference you made in that young man's life. And I just want you to be able to have a plaque that you can hang on your wall, because I'm very, very grateful to all the support that you've offered over the years in this program as my principal. And I want to say thank you. Dr. Keely, I would like for you to come forward as well, because you were a key player in this. As we ran kind of tight on money, as the cards, the certification cards changed from a dollar to $2 to $5, you'll recall this fabulous convocation we had, and it involved a scientist and a pig, and we were doing jar wars, and by golly, we raised money, and we had enough money to keep our certification program going at that point, too. And so, I hope you'll just enjoy a fun little paperweight and always remember the middle school students as well. It's such a key program to them.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Randall, please, and I promised it would be short. I am almost done. This puts a name and a face together for you. Most of you know Randall Hadler. He is the existing trainer right now. It's not just the hands-on training, not just the hands-only training. Our students receive adult, child, infant, CPR, obstructed airway, and AED training. And it requires an American Heart Association certified trainer to be able to test them out at this. This is Randall Hadler. Thank you for continuing with this program. We have to put a face to this name as well. Dave was the original trainer, the very first class that we had at the middle school downstairs in room 13. And you even were able to offer to me your daughter certified, and she became our babysitter. Our daughter is now 21 years old, and that's how important CPR training is to parents. So, thank you very much for all the minutes.
On behalf of the city and the fire department, I want to thank Laura, for all she's done for the kids at Beech Grove. It was a pleasure to go over there to the junior high and middle school and do fire safety and EMS training. But I regret that I was not able to attend the awards by foot at the middle school back in June because I was out of town. Laura retired, and you lost a great teacher, so. So, my personal thanks, not as mayor or as fire chief, but as somebody who cares about people and kids, I want to thank Laura Ott for all she's done. So, thank you.
The fire department did present Mrs. Ott with a beautiful plaque last June, which is on her mantle at home tonight.
It is on my desk.
We do thank all of you guys for everything that you do for us. We appreciate it. Dr. Kaiser, Laura, yours.
Well, I will be brief. This is my 34th year as an educator, so I guess that makes me old when I think about that. And it's always fun to celebrate milestones. And I've seen a lot of great educators, you know, start out, finish their careers, and do great things. But it's very special when you have two great educators that spend many, many years, and I don't have those numbers, but there are more than a couple. And these two are definitely more than a couple. I got to know them on a personal basis, because our daughters played travel volleyball together. And we spent one spring in 2009, I believe, or something like that, traveling around central Indiana and watching our daughters play volleyball together. My daughter's a senior at Franklin College, and Hillary's a senior at Southern Indiana. And the good thing is sometime in the near future, that tuition payment will stop. But we don't necessarily give awards just to teachers who retire, but I'd like Jeff to come up here and Laura, if you don't mind. And by the way, we do have to take pictures, so everybody, you can't leave until she gets pictures. But if you guys would come forward. You know, this is very special to me, because I got to know them on a personal basis, but on a professional basis, I've never seen a dynamic duo work together so much for kids, you know, and it's all about kids. The Something Extra Award, Beech Grove City Schools recognizes Laura and Jeff Ott for their dedication and commitment to our students, staff, and community. Gosh, I'm going to have a tough time reading the bottom line on this, but "The High Road to Service is Traveled with Integrity, Compassion, Understanding." Kids do not know how much we know until they know how much we care. September 10th, 2013.
Well, I'm just going to go right into our Student of the Month and a very short school report. Just to kind of update you on where we are as of this morning, we have 488 students at Beech Grove Middle School in two grades. That's up from last year's total about on this date at 442. We've mailed out 84 invitations for our Fall Remediation Intercession that's coming up. Last June, we gave out 133 Triple H Awards at our Honor Day Ceremony. This fall, we have 140 student athletes participating in fall sports. And just real quickly, our records, seventh grade football's 3-0, eighth grade football's 2-2, seventh grade volleyball's 4-2, eighth grade volleyball is 3-3, our girls' cross country is 12-0, and our boys' cross country is 8-4. And we certainly encourage you to come out and support our athletes at Beech Grove Middle School anytime you can. And now for our Student of the Month, this young man. Come forward, Cameron, please. The REACH team is happy to name Cameron Hester as the Beech Grove Middle School Student of the Month. Cameron is a seventh grader and displays excellent character in the hallways and classrooms. Cameron enters the building each day with a smile on his face and a good morning to everyone he encounters. He leaves the building just as happy and bids everyone a good night before he heads home. He is a productive and cooperative partner in group settings and encourages his fellow classmates to do their best. In addition to his kind and likable personality, Cameron demonstrates tremendous work ethic daily. He completes every assignment completely and thoroughly, studies for tests and quizzes, and puts forth a great effort on all projects. Cameron's hard work and dedication to his studies is evident in his impeccable grades. Cameron wants to be a physicist when he graduates from college. Some of you may have read about that in Last Buzzing Hornet. His favorite class is math and science. Cameron has liked both subjects ever since he was young and stated, quote, "Math is the language of the cosmos and an integral part of science. So, naturally, I enjoy it." Cameron Hester embodies all of the character and heart that makes a child a wonderful student. He's a pleasure to be around, and he takes full advantage of the education presented to him. We are proud to have Cameron on our team.
Good evening. Just a couple things about the high school. Update, we're at 837 students at the high school. We just got done celebrating some ECA achievements from last year. We had 55 sophomores that scored in the top quartile of either English or math ECA. We had 32 that passed and were in the top quartile of both English and math. So, it ended up, we had about 130 students that celebrated the success. We took those 55 students to Great Times for a Day with Mr. Clevinger, and we're going to have a party Friday, matter of fact, for 130 students that passed the ECA. Earlier this month, we had Community Hospital that came to Beech Grove High School and presented us with a portable AED unit that for really Carl Palmer to be able to take out on the field, practices, or also events. And so, we are very thankful for the support that Community Hospital is giving us. Our Scholar-Athlete of the Month this year is Ashley Davis. She's an 11th grader, and she is a golfer. She made all conference as well this year. Congratulations also goes to Ben Elliott. Ben Elliott was selected as a sophomore who best exemplifies what the mission of Renaissance is, his attitude, his attendance, his achievement, his academics. He was awarded a free class ring from Perk Jones, and that's Garrett Clark, so they help represent and support Beech Grove High School as well. Our congratulations also goes out to Mary Lee Cruck. Mary Lee was selected as our Faculty Member of the Month. She's a wonderful asset to Beech Grove High School. She works, she's worked here for 14 years. Mary Lee's put on so much effort and energy into what she does here, helping students succeed. She's been very patient and kind with all of our students that she works with. She's a role model for our students and staff as well. She's both a beautiful person inside as well as out. She deserves the August Educator of the Month, so congratulations to Mary Lee. She will receive her name on a traveling trophy, as well as she'll get, win a gift card for Fogo de Chow. So, congratulations to Mary Lee as well. Mr. Clevinger also reported that he's in charge of Renaissance, so he goes out and speaks with a lot of community members and businesses around Beech Grove. And actually, Renaissance support has increased since we started our Senior Lunch Program, which that's where our seniors get to leave campus and go out to eat at different businesses. And so, they've been supporting our local businesses eating. And when he goes around and talks to them about support of Beech Grove High School, they've told him that our students are really polite, well behaved, and they've really enjoyed the fact that our students are coming into their establishments. And so, in turn, they have supported Beech Grove Renaissance a lot more. And so, up to this last Friday, which was the midterm, we'd only had one student that had lost the privilege of going out during lunch, and that's if you get three tardies to school or if you get a pass from assignment. Tomorrow, we'll run report cards and see if anybody loses it, because if you get a D or an F, then you lose that opportunity as well for midterm. So, we're very happy with that program. Couple of things that are coming up during the intercession, there's going to be a Learn to Swim lessons that'll be offered for anybody K through 5. That's during the Fall Intercession. It's $25 a person to get involved in that class. Mr. Bruce Collins is taking care of that. Our band is getting ready to, of course, march in the Fall Festival Parade on the Saturday at noon, but they also will be going to the ISSA Invitational Contest at Plainfield this Saturday. We don't know for sure what time they're going to perform, but we think it's around 6:20. We'll get that out as soon as we know further. On the 18th of this month, we're going to have FFA ceremonies for degrees that they've achieved. That's in the auditorium, starting at 5. And on the 24th, we're having a big FFA District 8 kickoff for FFA, and that's counties from all around Marion County as well as Marion County will be here at the high school. And that will, again, be in the cafeteria, the gymnasium, and auditorium. So, we're really kicking off FFA in a district viewpoint, not just here in Marion County. Our football game for homecoming is Friday, the 27th, against Tinley. And our homecoming dance, we moved it to Saturday night, which will be on the 28th, so we don't have such a cluttered Friday night, so to speak. So, the kids will be able to enjoy the football game and then also come back on Saturday night, go to the dance. Friday, October 11th, is our Veterans Appreciation Night. Will be at Beech Grove High School. That's during the football game. It's against Trident Central. We'll be recognizing all veterans. That can be come grab a dinner, a free dinner for the veterans, and a lot of stuff going on. And so, everybody's welcome to do that as well. The Student of the Month at the high school was Shannon Newworth, and she is playing soccer right now. So, she'll be back next month to, for me to introduce her as well. Also have the opportunity tonight to, and also the pleasure to talk about the Hornet Richmond Academy, which is down the street. We've gotten off to a great start at this year's school. We have 48 students at the academy. Each student attends half a day at the academic program, and then they're combined with either work-study, or they go to C9 for the other half of the day. And we've already had students that have earned 15 credits so far this semester in the first four and a half weeks. This year, we've also implemented what's called the HEA Life Skills and Wellness Initiative. This is a new program that provides weekly instruction in both personal wellness and fitness, also physical and vocational exploration, citizenship, and personal growth. This year, it's a long, it's a year-long, but weekly program that includes outdoor exploration, team building activities. There's a day camp that the students will be going to Bradford Woods as well, field trips, guest speakers, and fitness education as well. During the month of September, it's Life Skills Focus is on citizenship. And last Wednesday, Mayor Buckley came to HEA and met with our students to talk about the importance of citizenship in the community. And tomorrow, our HEA students are going to be going to visit downtown and viewing the 9/11 memorial as well. So, we're also very thrilled to work with Kelly Newman. She is a teacher at South Grove. She comes over and works with the Physical Wellness Program each month. And thanks goes out to Tanya Reed for giving her the, I guess, training her for a couple hours to come over to HEA and work with our students. It's been very helpful. And so, this is an initiative that we really want to get our students involved in throughout the entire year, and it couldn't happen without South Grove and Tanya's help. And so, at the present time, we have 17 seniors that are on track to graduate for the 2013-14 school year, and hopefully, we'll be walking across the stage, all 17 of them. But tonight, we want to introduce one of them that's very special. Marie Harris. Tell you just a couple of things about Maria. Maria is the August Student of the Month. She's a senior at HEA. Before, we were just talking, and we thought she had had three credits. Well, she has four. She made, she made another credit up since this paper was written. And so, she's done a tremendous, tremendous amount of work to get to where she's at. She was nominated because of her diligence and how she approaches her academic success. We were talking, too, about how much she spends at night doing HEA, going plate on stuff. At midterm, again, she's earned four credits already. She's worked hard to get this progressive, this progress academically, and she demonstrates the commitment of both academic and personal growth in all the other programs that we're doing. Maria also is a Central 9 in veterinary careers, where she's maintaining an A average. In addition, Maria's going to work a part-time job at Wendy's. She also plans to attend Harrison College after graduation, and she wants to become a veterinary technician. And she hopes someday to open up an animal daycare facility. Mrs. Condon stated that Maria's worked hard to maintain consistent progress since she began an HEA student. This was last year. And her Hornet mentor, Mr. Hanselit, also comments that Maria's made great progress and is on track to graduating in May. And so, we really congratulate Maria for her commitment and her personal growth at HEA. She's done everything we've asked her to do, and she's made a commitment to succeed. We're very thankful for that. So, our Student of the Month from HEA.
Good evening. ISET scores were released yesterday. We've been waiting patiently for the state to do that for quite a while now. Parent codes were sent home in May. They're at the end of the school year. If parents do not, if they've lost that code or misplaced it, they can contact the school office at South Grove or at the middle school, and we will get you a new code. So, I know I have two kids myself, and I don't know if I know where their codes are, so. But we can get you those. The information from the state, like that will be in the newspaper and all that, that's embargoed until September 17th. So, you're not going to see a lot out yet, but it is coming. They are releasing the score. So, again, if you need a parent code, contact the school office. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the new staff members at South Grove very quickly. We do have a new front desk, Secretary Marcella Mahan. If you come into South Grove Intermediate School, you're going to get a happy smile, and she will absolutely take care of you. So, I wanted to welcome Marcella Mahan. Also, we have Amanda Norton, teaching fifth grade math, science, and social studies. Amanda was an instructional assistant for Special Ed last year and did such a fabulous job that when a job opening came up in fifth grade, we snagged her and put her right in there, because she was, she was excellent. And she's, she's doing a great job and is thrilled to be a part of the South Grove staff. And we also hired Ethan Harris, who you may recognize his name. He was a Beech Grove grad and a wrestler at the University of Indianapolis. He has since moved back to Indiana, and he has his special education license, and he is teaching fifth grade special education. In fact, I think Ethan's dad was on the school board at one point. So, welcome back to Ethan Harris. Welcome back to Beech Grove. Glad to have him back. Couple of things for parents. Progress reports went home last week for any student that had a D or an F in a subject. So, if parents didn't get a progress report, that means their kids are probably doing okay. But we encourage them, parents, to check Parent Connect. That is our online grade book that they can get in and see real-time data, real-time grades for their children. So, if parents don't have a Parent Connect code, they can also contact our school office, and we'll get them hooked up with that. But as always, if you have questions about grades, call the teacher, call the office. We will, we will assist you any way that we can. Penny Wars is going on this week. We're collecting pennies for cystic fibrosis. We've got a canned food drive coming up beginning September 30th for servants' heart. October 1st is our family academic night. And then, October 7th through the 11th, our parent-teacher conferences. So, I would encourage parents to look for information coming home on all of those events. And I would like for Nathan Allison to come up, please. Nathan is South Grove's Student of the Month, our first one for the year. And I told him to dress so that we would match, and I think we look pretty darn good, don't you think? We didn't want to clash. Nathan has been on my radar since he entered as a fourth grader. I noticed right away that he was an exceptional young man, and you'll hear now why that is. Mrs. Alkar says that Nathan is a well-rounded and exemplary student. In addition to his academic studies, he has participated in music and art activities. Last year, he played the lead role in the fifth grade Christmas production as Caesar Salad, right? And he did a great job. This year, he's in the sixth grade choir, and she says that Nathan is a fine example of good citizenship at South Grove. Mrs. Omes, his teacher this year, says that Nathan's language arts, as his language arts teacher, he is always extremely respectful. He is kind to others and always prepared for class. He is a joy to have each day. And Mrs. Denton, fourth grade teacher, she said, "I had the privilege of teaching Nathan in fourth grade. Nathan is an upstanding student in every possible way. His intelligence, coupled with his work ethic, makes him unstoppable. Nathan is very kind to his peers, teachers, and to the staff at South Grove. Nathan shows integrity in a world that doesn't always reciprocate. In addition to this, Nathan can draw a mean Captain America and have an accent that would impress many on our occasional speak with an accent days. What more could you ask for in a student? Well, just one thing, great parents." And Nathan has that, too. She said, "I'm very proud of Nathan and thankful for the time I was given with him." And then, Mrs. Bear, his sixth grade teacher, wrote a letter, actually, to his parents. I'm just going to read a little bit of it. But it says, "Although I have only known Nathan a short time now, it is obvious to me that his success in school is something that he values greatly. When I think of Nathan and my impression of him, I think of the word caring in capital letters. He cares about helping others. He cares about being kind to others. He cares about his school. He cares about his schoolwork and academic progress. He cares about being respectful." He cares about being respectful." And that says it all. So congratulations, Nathan Allison.
Just a few highlights of things that are going on at Central. Exciting news, last Thursday, the superintendent of public instruction, Glenda Ritz, visited Central Elementary. It was an exciting opportunity to share with Mrs. Ritz the many successes that were going on at Central. The main purpose of our visit was to learn about TAP, but we were able to talk about TAP at Central, talk about TAP throughout the district, but also have her go on a tour of the school and see what was going on with the teachers and the boys and girls. I'm very proud of the impression that the students and the staff made. It was a great visit, and I appreciate all of the hard work that everybody put into making that visit go well. Couple of important things that are coming up. Next Tuesday, hopefully, maybe at this time, we might still be meeting. On the seventeenth, we'll be having a PTO meeting. It's a wonderful opportunity for the families of both Central and Hornet Park. It's a joint meeting to get involved. We'll be discussing upcoming events and how better to support our students. Plan on attending this meeting next Tuesday night at six-thirty. It'll be at Central, and we hope to see you there. Finally, planning far ahead, because this will happen before the next board meeting, Grandparents' Day at Central is going to be October third and October fourth. The third is reserved for the second graders, and the fourth is reserved for the third graders. And with so many boys and girls at Central this year, it's going to be interesting getting everybody in and out. But the activities start at one forty-five with some time in the classroom. At two o'clock, we make our way to the gymnasium for a cookie and some music by the boys and girls. And then we'll also, we'll share our weekly flashback Friday, even though it'll be Thursday, and so the special guests can kind of see some of the activities and things that go on at school. So that's super exciting. And more information will be coming home on that next week. The most important part of the evening now is to introduce Brianna Jaeger, and she is our August Student of the Month. She's going to come up right now. Brianna is new to Central this year, and I'm excited that she's made such a wonderful impression so quickly. Brianna is a third grader in Mrs. Tow's classroom. Mrs. Tow states that Brianna has been an excellent addition to her class. Brianna is always on task and following directions. She's a hard worker and does her best at everything she does. She has become a student leader and a role model for small group work in the classroom. She's very friendly and has made many new friends already. Mrs. Wiestar, our applied technology teacher, says Brianna is a wonderful student to have in class. She stands out as someone who will listen and do her best to help others. She is always doing the right thing, and is a student Mrs. Wiestar can count on. I am very pleased to present Brianna Jaeger, August Student of the Month.
It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I decided to share, one, I will share some upcoming exciting dates with Hornet Park. Second, I'm going to share about a new program that will kind of go out throughout the entire year at Hornet Park, and wanted to share the basics with you about that. And then finally, we'll celebrate our Student of the Month. First, we have a jam-packed next few weeks of fun, random days at Hornet Park. Tomorrow, to kind of instill that sense of patriotism in our youngest Hornets, we have Red, White and Blue Day. So I encourage your students and our staff to wear red, white and blue tomorrow. On Friday, we have PJ Day, Pajama Day, and that is a fundraiser for Riley Children's Hospital. Next Wednesday, so just think Wednesday, Friday, Wednesday are special days. Next Wednesday is Mustache Day. Seems strange, right? But our theme is we must ask you a question. And so we're working on question words and language arts. We're working on polite interactions with one another. So you should, if you ever pop over at Hornet Park on Mustache Day next Wednesday, be prepared to answer some personal questions. Well, maybe not too personal, but maybe, "Hi, how are you? What do you have going on?" And then next Thursday is our annual father-daughter dance. So we invite our, our students and a special guest, could be a father or another special guest joining the young ladies, and we'll have an opportunity for a mother-son dance in the spring as well. So lots of fun things coming up at Hornet Park. But I wanted to take just a minute with you and share tonight about a program called Bucket Filler's. If you have a Hornet Park student, you've probably heard of bucket filling in Brooklyn here in the front. She recognizes that right away. Our homeschool advisor, Colleen Borger, with the help of Michelle Foster, our treasurer, have sought out and developed a program called Bucket Filling that we use this year for character education and infold it in that as well as our bullying prevention program also. So this year, Hornet Park will be using this new character development program called Bucket Filling. It is an easy-to-understand concept. Everyone carries an invisible bucket with us around. So you have one with you here tonight. It holds our good thoughts and our feelings. When our buckets are full, we feel happy. If our buckets are empty, we feel sad. Students quickly start understanding that they can fill other people's buckets by what they do and what they say, but on the other end, they can also be bucket dippers. And by the mean things that we might do or inconsiderate things we may say, we could be dipping from another's bucket. So during the school year, we're reminding, encouraging and directly instructing children on how to be bucket fillers. So if you hear a child say, "I earned a pingey," what we're doing is every classroom has a bucket, and if a child exhibits a way of bucket filling, perhaps they say something kind to you or greet you with a warm good morning, they may earn a pingey. And so I would hand a child a ping pong ball, they get very excited over a pingey. Take that into their classroom and add it to their bucket. When their classroom's bucket is filled, they get to put their class on the bucket filler wall of fame in the main hallway. So already, our first kickoff lesson was centered around a book called Have You Filled a Bucket Today?, A Guide to Daily Happiness for Kids. And it was, it's kind of a lighthearted concept and an appropriate way of teaching kids to give back to one another and build that peer interaction. So bucket filling will be going on all year at Hornet Park. So far, we've worked on greetings and reciprocating those greetings and saying please and thank you. So in my office, it's a pleasure because as kids walk back from the front office to their classroom, they'll stop and really slowly go, "Good morning, Mrs. Provis." And if I say good morning, they're like, "Pingey? Are we going to get a pingey here?" So it's a wonderful program, and it's really appropriate for the age. So I know we all will strive to be bucket fillers and not dippers as well. So that which we're most excited to share about this evening is our Student of the Month. So Arabella Jones, will you come and join me, Arabella? We have lots of staff that chose to share something special about Arabella, so I'm going to have to pick and choose because there are so many wonderful things. Mrs. Sutton, our art teacher, says Arabella is just a bright ray of sunshine in my room. She always has a smile, exhibit A, and kind hello, and uses her best manners. She's a bucket filler. She's an amazing girl loaded with talent, and her personality is infectious. I'm so blessed to have her as one of my students. Mrs. Borger says, "Arabella is an astonishing example of what a true Hornet embodies: respect, kindness and happiness. She is always willing to lend a hand to her peers and often offers extra help to even the staff in our building. She's a sweet young lady with a warm and endearing heart. I'm so proud of Arabella and her accomplishments." And finally, from Mrs. Osborne, her classroom teacher, "Arabella has just blossomed over the past year at Hornet Park. She is wonderful to have in class. She has a fun, spunky personality. Bella has made quite an effort this year to be a respectful and kind Hornet who sets an example for others by following directions, school rules and always trying to do her best." Proud to present Arabella Jones, Student of the Month.
Okay, as they mentioned to you, the I-Step scores kind of came out Monday. What they did is they gave us the student scores, but you had no composites. We had no idea what, how each building did. Of course, I took all the different scores and started counting, so we have somewhat of an idea how we did, but we're going to wait for the official because there's some come and go. As far as the kids who were impacted by the shutdown during the I-Step, it was very minimal as far as the state's concerned. We had one, I think, at Central. We had maybe six, seven, eight at South Grove, and we had none at the middle school. So from the state's perspective, it was, did not affect. I'm sure the building principals will disagree with that, but that's the way it came out. So rather than talk about I-Step tests and results, which we'll be doing a little bit later, on the seventeenth, all these composite scores come out. We get the official word, so I have to wait until the seventeenth. We did just complete the NWA score. NWA is a nationally-normed test. It is an online test. What's nice about NWA is it is truly a growth test. It means as kids start to miss questions, the questions get easier. Or as they start getting harder and harder questions, and they get them right, they get harder and harder and harder. So what that means is you don't top out or you're doing bottom out. It truly is a growth. So we, one of the goals was is how are our high school students reading? Because if they can't read the textbook, they're not going to be very successful. So I want to give you a little idea of how we're doing, using NWA as kind of a basis as far as reading at the high school level. So this is from Mr. Klevager. He said the Junior Mean RIT. Now, RIT's the scale that the NWA used. Really, it's a matter of what you call it, it's like a yardstick of where they are. So the Junior Mean RIT was the highest we've had in three years. So that means our juniors are reading better than we've seen in the last three years. They were five RIT points above the NWA norms. That was the national norm. So it gives us an idea that they're reading better than most of the other people in the nation. And actually improved from last year's administration. The sophomores are a higher level than you juniors were at this point last year and are starting above the NWA RIT. So you can see, what I like to see is the more you're in school, the better you get, rather than the opposite, which has happened in the past, the more you're in school, the worse you get. You know, the more you're in school, the better readers you became, and that's exactly what we want. Freshman scores were the best we've had for three years, but they're still not where we want them. So we keep plugging along, so when they're sophomores and juniors, we'll, we'll get them up there where they should be. The three classes, there was a total of six hundred kids, and the lowest was informational text, which we find this across the board, as reading informational type things, reading charts, reading research papers, reading science articles, that type of thing. But we're closing the gap. So we're statistically not really too far off to saying it's not a factor anymore. That's what our TAP materials were this year, our strategies were on is informational text. So it's narrowing that gap between literary, which is reading stories as composed, to reading science, journalism, journals and things like that.
Kids, how long do you think it will take, if, do you think it will take, before we start seeing a, an increase because of our balanced calendar?
An increase in test scores?
Yeah, or retention, reading retention.
It depends on how many kids actually take advantage of the, of the intercessions, if, and if we're truly doing remediation. And if, if they take advantage of all this, then you're going to see those. I think, I think rather than looking for across the board, if we could follow those kids, take that, those opportunities and see how it affects them. Usually, the best strategy that's been proven is the more you're in school and the more you're around teachers, the better you're going to do. So that's the number one strategy, is having more schooling. And if they'll take advantage of it, it could only help. And we were very, very successful at Central on the I-Read because that's, we did that summer remediation, it was a very short time, and that's how we got up to, you know, passed the ninety percent of people passing. So that was very, very successful. And since we talked about Central, I kind of used them as my example because some of the things we were going to talk about were, Central had good examples, so I'm just kind of pulled theirs rather than switching from group to group. So the next part is what the NWA would look like. And what we have here is the diagram, you see the yellow, they're estimating whether they're going to pass I-Step or not. So the yellow actually is the people who are going to pass, and then the blue are going to get past plus. So you can estimate that what they think at this time are going to pass, and then we want that number to get smaller and smaller. We get this now, every time we give an NWA estimate of whether they're going to pass the I-Step. This is beginning of the year, so we got all year to get that twenty-three percent down to ten percent or whatever. We'd love to have a ten percent, I mean, ninety percent pass, and that would be great. Wanted to show you, that's the kind of data we get, just so you can have an idea what NWA is about. Mr. Buckler did talk about the state superintendent visiting us. She was really here for, for TAP. She went into a cluster group, she met with TLT members, she talked to mentors. She seemed to be extremely interested in the program. It is my estimation, I've always said this, it's the best professional development I could, I can think of. It matches all the standards. It's too bad schools in Indiana can't have this cluster town to do the professional development. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is, as I walked around with her when they went from room to room and, and building, within the building, the, the school would just, just look beautiful. If you never, haven't been in there recently, the displays outside were just tremendous. I have not seen them that good anywhere. And then when she went into each room, of course, I'm just standing there and hoping everything, the kids were just behaving perfectly, and the teachers were so engaged, and it was truly a, just a, a nice, of course, it makes me feel good because it's my home, but it was just really nice to see how, how well that, and the kids did excellent job, and the teachers were some of the best teaching that you could possibly see. So I was very pleased with that. The last thing I want to show you is, the, the teachers do take a survey at the end of the year, and it's at the end of the year for TAP, and try to see, you know, how do the teachers feel about the program? So I wanted to use this to show you a little bit of what teachers are saying. This is called the Tell Survey, and we had a hundred percent of the teachers at Central participate in this. The blue is moderate support, the red is high support, the whole bar is support. So kind of look at, anything that's left, that little white, is not support. So this is the amount of support we have for the various programs. The second one is Indiana school, Indiana TAP schools, and then we have the third one, which was the national. So you can see at Central, the various parts of TAP were either way ahead or ahead of the nation of Indiana. I think it's one, one area that we're even close and to, and that's the instructional focus, but everything was much, so they get you a feel that the teachers really feel good about the program, and this is very successful as far as I'm concerned.
My update included really an update for you all regarding the corporation's implementation of the state's requirement to update our bullying policy and procedures. The legislature in the last session issued some new guidance, some, actually, some new language regarding bullying and the requirements that state corporations need to include in their bullying policies. The legislators asked that the Department of Education come up with some guidance for school corporations to be able to apply the laws that they put into place regarding this new bullying legislation. So the Department of Ed just recently issued the new bullying guidelines that school corporations need to follow, and there's six of them. In your packet, I kind of outlined each of those six guidelines, and then also we provided you with, we were given a really nice analysis of what school corporations need to do by one of our attorney partners. They kind of distilled the legislature's language into about thirty, forty pages worth of information. We took that information and tried to distill it a little bit more into what we provided you all with, which is kind of the Cliff Notes version of what school corporations are really required to do. In order to respond to this new guidance from the Department of Education, we, as an administrative team, called together our homeschool advisors, and Mr. Cox sat in on that meeting as he's kind of the safe schools leader for our school corporation, and really sifted through these, these guidance pieces. Recognize that we're doing a lot of great stuff already, so that was really affirming to know that many good things are happening, but also recognizing that there are some pieces that we will need to implement that are not in place currently. So our next step in our process is this Friday with our administrative team of principals, we're going to really go through each of the indicators that are required, and then we're going to develop our plan, kind of an action plan for how we can get all of this into place. We have this school year in order to be able to get everything into place, and then the Department of Ed is actually going to be monitoring our implementation of these guidelines. So there could be document review, there could be policy, there, I'm sure there will be policy review, and we will actually be coming back to be policy review, and we will actually be coming back to you all as a board at our next meeting to adopt the updated bullying policy. I believe that you did that already this last summer, and that was to be in accordance with the legislation that was enacted, and then the legislation actually said, and then you will also need to develop another updated policy once the Department of Ed gives that guidance. So, now that they've done that, we'll be able to draft that policy and have something for you all to review. But, just wanted you to know that we're really aware of our, our responsibility in this regard, really looking to proactively implement some strategies this year so that we're ready for guidance for, for, for next year, and feel like we have a good plan in place. But, certainly, it's a really important topic and clearly as board members, this is something that you all are asked about a lot, so we want to be able to answer any questions for you in, in that, in that regard, and certainly as we move forward, we're here if any questions pop up. Okay?
Thank you. Mrs. Stevens?
Already. Things have really been going good, the, as far as the papers are still putting things out there, and we've also had a news story on Channel 6. I don't know if you had a chance to see it with our bus driver and how people reacted. I think that was a very good positive story for Beach Grove City Schools and the city of Beach Grove. So, that was great. I just, I want to tell Mr. Saunders thank you for that. He did such a great job and helped me coordinate that, getting Call Kid Well to be the bus driver, and then I had the privilege of riding the bus along with the reporter and the photographer. It's been a long time since I rode, rode this, rode a school bus, so it was just great. But, and then I got to tell you, Mrs. Reed's kids were on that bus, it was South Grove, and they were so well behaved. They just set a wonderful example for Beach Grove City Schools. They did a great job, they just, they were wonderful the entire trip. They were kids and talks and everything, but they were so respectful and it was just, made such a great impression on the reporter. It was, it was a great, great adventure, so. And going along with that too, you know how it really takes a village to raise a child? Well, in the village of Beach Grove City Schools, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that make things happen, and for instance, Mr. Reed and Mr. Babett and all of those people that make sure that when we have to put up signs like for FFA or do those other kind of, community relations kind of things, they're always there to make sure it happens, and it's so seamless, and they do a great job. So, I wanted you just to know, I know you know that already, but to let you know again, reiterate how wonderful they are to make things keep running. Fall Festival Booth, we're going to have that this weekend, Friday and Saturday, and again, our team is going to be taking care of that and making sure it's set up, and I think a few of you are going to be working that booth, volunteering for it, and so we'll have candy to hand out, some other things, so it'll be a good representation for Beach Grove City Schools. Then Paul and I went around to each school now, and we've talked to each principal and a team and talked about what can we do to further enhance community relations and public relations and really get out there the great news of all the wonderful things that are occurring in each school. And that's been very productive, and, and I want to thank you principals for, you know, allowing us to come in and to talk to you about that and take time out of your busy day. I think it was really very useful and I think even better things are going to come out of that, so excited about that. And then real briefly, for the Beach Bridge Cage Foundation, we're going to hold two fundraisers, one the end of February of next year, which will be a Pacers game, so I hope that you'll support that because that will hopefully bring in some extra money, and all of that, the Education Foundation Board, they voted, we want to take all the money that's raised that and put into our teacher grant fund. So, that will all go, anything that we make off that will be added to what we already give out in teacher grants, and we want to add to that. So, and then this October 26th, we're going to have our Barnes and Noble fundraiser too. Excuse me, at the Greenwood Barnes and Noble, and so hope that you'll be able to join us for that too because they'll give us a little bit of money to, again, put in that fund. So, those are just good things, and there's continuing to be a lot of good things and more so than we have time to tell, but thank you for your support, really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we need a, a motion to approve the August 13 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then I need a motion to approve the executive session minutes of August 22nd.
Second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, now for the claims, I need a motion to approve the claims.
Motion to approve claims.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have any public comment? Or, Mr., or Dr. Keeley?
Yeah, before, certainly, before I start with the budget processes, and we have a number of things I'd like to kind of walk you through, and I'm going to kind of explain that whole process, and it is really a year-long process, takes me about 18 months to really go through the entire 2014 budget. So, we'll do it in 10 minutes, and I'll do my best to expedite that, expedite that. All right, the nice thing about the budget process this year as compared to a couple of years ago, for the first year, nothing really has changed. It's all the same system. So, this is the second consecutive year that I've worked diligently on a website by the Department Local Government Finance, DLGF, through the Indiana, kind of like the State Board of Accounts and all the finance, Division of Finance in the government, to upload all of our information onto forms called Form 1, Form 2, Form 3, Form 4, 4B, advertisements, things like that. So, it's very prescriptive in nature. I had to build kind of the entire format of all the account lines using the State Board of Accounts manual and all those numbers, and it's kind of a lot of drop-down menu stuff, things like that. And so, in that process, I'm just going to share a couple of documents with you that I use so that I can really do this because it's very long in process. And so, I've not really shared it with you in particular, but I certainly can in the future if you want to, but I make a 2014 budget calendar, and I start it in about December of the year before. So, December of 2012, I created the 2014 calendar, and then the entire year, annual year this 2013, I followed my process of March, April S2S meetings is part of my calendar. I find out what our needs are at the building level, what are our wants, if I add a few bucks extra, what, you know, what are, what do you want in technology, what do you need for, maybe you need one more bus route, maybe you need some more discipline on the buses, so we need to consider money for bus aids, things like that. I crank through that, then I make a decision as an administrative team how to divide up the dollars. June and July, I present that to you, the board. In August, I put it in the newspaper, and here's our advertisement, and it was in the paper 14, 18 days ago and then four days ago, and that's statutory by law, we had to do that. I asked for this public hearing, and so that's what we're going to do, so we need a motion for a, to open a public hearing. Once we open the public hearing, I will answer any questions on the very specific numbers. Once I'm done with that, we can close the hearing. So, why don't we go ahead with that piece now if we want to do the official hearing so that we can have anyone in the audience and yourselves as community members ask me specific questions about dollars?
I will open the 2014 budget hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you. So, by unanimous vote, we now have the public hearing open, and so I have this document that I presented in the newspaper, and I also put it into this system called Gateway, and I uploaded it, and it talks about the Indiana codes and the law and how to follow Indiana Code 5-3-1, and those are the advertising requirements and the open door law, you know, everybody needs to come and ask me questions if you have any questions, it has the dates, there are the public hearing. Once we close the public hearing, people can still inspect and call me and talk to me, or if you have questions about the budget, please do that. Then we'll wait until October 8th, and I'll go through the same process again, and then I'll ask you to adopt the budget that I proposed to you, okay? So, I'm going to scroll down a little bit. Does this not scroll with two fingers? Oh, scroll to the other. Very good. Okay, at the top of the screen, you're going to see maximum estimated transportation levies. That was provided to me by the DLGF. They said, "Beach Grove City Schools, you will not be able to raise more than $950,000 in that." And then they also said, "You're not going to be able to raise more than $277,000 in a maximum levy to buy new buses." So, they're really kind of capping us to two buses per year. Out of a 26 fleet, bus expectation is 12 to 15, 12 to 14 years. We got to pay attention, buy a bus when we can. When we get money to buy buses, we need to put new buses in the fleet and take out the old ones. Safety and keep our current fleet as current and technologically advanced as possible. So, those numbers were given to me. I populate these numbers by all of my forms. Form 1 is a huge budget, a budget estimate that is about 40 pages long, but this is a summary of those dollars, okay? And so, I anticipate with cash balance left over, money raised by taxes, that we're going to be somewhere in the mode of this much of a budget estimate. I always estimate high, and I mean, this is what, the sixth year, maybe the eighth year, I stood in front of you and I said, "I always estimate high because if you don't ask for this much, you're going to only get what you ask for." So, if you estimate too low and they give it to you, you might start thinking, "Boy, why didn't I ask for another little bit more to buy one more bus?" So, I always estimate high. Typically, we are around an approved budget of $26 million, okay? I ask for 33, I anticipate the DLGF, in their due diligence, they will scale us back. That's fine, okay? Maximum, maximum estimated income from taxes only, again, I raise this high because under Indiana law, every taxpayer that's a homeowner is only allowed, right, 1% taxes on their home. That's the maximum, right? So, rentals, you get 2%, and businesses, you can have up to 3%. Well, here in Beach Grove, we are at our tax cap. So, by me squeezing the number over the tax cap, I know we're never going to get it, but it statutorily forces the DLGF to give us the dollar amount, and I want to get 8.1. And so, I want them to cut them all in half, it's fine. Go cut them all in half because I need to get 8.1. But, that pushes the DLGF just to do their job and scale us back in every area, but it will never force the taxpayer over 1% because in the Constitution, they're only allowed to pay no more than 1%. And you need to know about the referendum, of course, it's outside of the tax cap, and it's always been 35 cents, and it is what we need to run transportation, and so again, this year I will ask for exactly 35 cents. And so, we'll be granted exactly 35 cents, okay? So, that's just kind of a rundown of that, and these are the current tax levies, and these are the numbers that they will take on a spreadsheet and scale them back to these numbers. I have no doubt in my mind, that's their process. So, I did my process. I've informed you of, that's the world of budget. You estimate, right? And then you live within your means. Once we get the dollars we get, that's all we get, right? So, we have to live within our means, and that's part of the law and part of what I do. So, any questions about how I came to any of those numbers, and some of them are pretty big numbers, so.
So, once you talk about the realistic number that you and I, Brian, or if we looked at, of that eight million, give us a ballpark where you think we're going to be as far as once the DLGF cuts, what will it look like?
Yeah, I really don't think that we'll, I think it'll be close to 8.6 here. But, but I really don't, it's not going to be nearly what I put up there, and the reason, our debt service, there's, there's a lot of really complex things called protected and unprotected tax areas, such as debt service. That is a protected area, they have to give us some of that money because we have to pay our mortgage payment, and so there's a lot of law and legal stuff in there that gets pretty, pretty difficult. But, I anticipate capital projects being dropped down to about 1.1 million, and that's fine, we get 41 cents out of that. Whether we'll receive all that money or not, I'm not sure. Transportation will be dropped down to about 900,000, maybe eight, right now we're seven something, right? Yeah, 799. So, I would love it if they just gave us 850,000, and so there's a more realistic number. So, I anticipate bus replacement being around 150,000, 850 here, close to 1.3 here, and then a little bit higher in debt service because I do, I did ask for more, so hopefully we'll get some more. And you have to understand tax rate shares the burden with the city, the library, Franklin Township, Perry Township, Warren, Center Township, which is kind of an IPS area portion of it, so we share the burden of taxes, and so we all kind of have to cooperate and try to get as much for our local Beach Grove as we can. So, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
On the, on the bus replacement, when we go to purchase buses, do we take into consideration the size of the community, whether we need AC for those buses, don't need AC for those buses, or do all the buses go with AC kind of like cars now?
Absolutely. We only buy, Thomas is a, is a type of bus that we like here because it's got a very good engine in it. It seems to last at least 12, if not 14 years, and Thomas buses today have a camera system, they have options on them that are kind of a higher grade. We have moved all of our buses to air conditioning, where can, every new bus will always have air conditioning. The conditions on the bus, we believe that's best for kids, and so that's what we always buy. Could we have the option of buying an older bus always without some of those things and put the windows down? I believe if, if you do those kind of things and you buy kind of a lower grade bus, I believe that it does impact the learning environment, so we always buy kind of a better value.
I agree. If I was to ask you if they were, you know, the kids can be carpool on the way to school so they're not stressed out already.
Absolutely. Today was 92 degrees with a heat index of 104. We could not have transported kids on certain buses.
There's nothing more than I would like for a bunch of mad kids to get to the street in the morning.
Yeah, I, I try to protect them against that.
We make them happy when they get there.
It's just the allergies that kids have.
Yeah.
You know, you put a lot of buses, they're complaining there.
Asthma.
You know, even though our bus routes are very short in length, both mileage-wise and time-wise, it's really not that much more expensive to do it. And then we have, we can use the buses for multi-purpose for field trips, athletic events we're going on, or distances. The other thing I'll just throw here right now, Dr. Keeley and Brian and I met with a, a company to provide a new updated software system called Versitran, and we have a work session on the 24th, I believe, and Tom's going to give you a lot more details about that, but what's really good about Versitran, you know, in some districts, they help you reroute and save a lot of money and cut down on bus routes, and that's not going to happen in Beach Grove, but what it does do, it helps, helps us a lot in keeping track of maintenance, keeping track of idle times, and it just helps in a lot of little things. So, at the, on the 24th, which is a Tuesday, I believe, we'll come back and talk a lot more. So, as we talk about transportation, Tom really believes that we could save anywhere up to 30, 20 to $30,000 by implementing a new software system that helps us track all the aspects of the transportation system. So, we'll talk more about that later this month, and then hopefully come to you with an approval process later in October for that. But, right now, how we do our, our tracking is on an Excel spreadsheet, you know, our routes and everything. And what's really nice about Versitran, you can put in your address on, on our website, go to transportation, put in your address, they'll tell you when the bus is going to arrive at your house within, within about a five-minute span. And it's just, well, it's really getting us to the 21st century near of transportation and really communicating with parents, so more details to come on that.
Pretty neat, something they showed me that you can watch a map and you can see where our buses are, and so you can see them moving, and you can use an app on your iPhone, type in your student number, and find out estimated time of arrival at your bus stop if they're seven minutes away. So, it's pretty darn, pretty darn cool, so I think that's, that's a neat.
Just for safety reasons, you know, we had the tornadoes here nine, 10 years ago, and, and the questions were, "Where are my kids at?", and they were on buses.
Right.
So, that's awesome.
Yeah, and, and it's really neat, in case of an accident or anything like that, you have up to the minute, you know exactly where they were, what speed they were traveling, what happened at, you know, by minute, you know, second, by second intervals, if the gas was depressed or if the brake was on, it knows those things. So, it's pretty, pretty technologically advanced, but it's, it's pretty exciting to look at that. So, here's the other ordinance resolution we'll consider on October 8th, and this is the appropriation, which means this is the permission. And this is the appropriation, which means this is the permission to spend dollars. And so then it has the adopted tax rate here. And again, the DLGF will do their job, and they will reduce these to budget estimates, really from years past. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to parts of the budget. Right now, I'd like to close the budget hearing, and then we're going to open up a conversation about, which one, CPF or transportation?
Bus replacement.
Bus replacement first, and then we'll move on to CPF after that. And so these are all steps, again, that the state requires us to go in order and open and close these hearings, and I know it's kind of weird, but.
Motion to close the budget hearing?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So bus replacement plan hearing, I'd like to open.
2014 bus replacement hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. And as Tom's looking into that, I don't know if you mentioned, so I sit down for a moment, we're probably going to buy one bus this year and one activity bus.
Yeah, we have funds on hand to do that, and I anticipate those maybe get delivery in January. So we do have an older fleet, so we do need to pay attention. I think we have four buses now that get inspected twice a year mandated, because they're at the 12-year mark. When you get to a certain age in a bus, it has to have a state police check and you have to get approval, which is good, it's a good thing. But it's a lot more than anything under 12 years, anything newer only has to be inspected the one time because they're a little bit better. So this is the notice for the bus replacement plan. And as you'll see, I do go out 12 full years, so it's 2014 all the way up to 2025. And I anticipate every year, approximately two new buses need to be budgeted for. And so again, we do raise the dollar figure because we do have some pension bond neutrality. And again, these are some legal issues that force us to kind of raise some tax rates in one area. And then the DLGF does their job and reduces it, down to two buses. And so that's, that's why these numbers are a little bit higher in current years. And then they go down, and they are very consistent all the way until you hit to 2025. I think the next page, I had made a PDF, so this isn't my normal document. Oh, that's just way too much right here. I can't turn it sideways because it's a PDF. But this is a really good Excel document that I use and I share with our transportation director, that has all of our dollars and the type of bus, whether it's an A, C, D, passenger-wise, it's got the name, what kind of bus it is, whether it's an international or whether it's a Thomas bus. And so they're just documents that I kind of use to put this whole deal together, so. I don't think I'm going to have any cash balance at the end of 2013. So that's one of the reasons why we have to raise the maximum levy of about 277 as well. So that's my bus plan. And again, taxpayers are always welcome to call me or come by. I have lots and lots and lots of pages of the bus that I can share with anybody if they wanted to know more detail. Seeing there none, you want to close the hearing?
Okay. Can I have a motion to close the bus replacement plan hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, if you feel comfortable with the plan, we are authorized by the advertisement and by the steps taken in this process to go ahead and adopt the bus replacement plan.
So can I have a motion to adopt 2014 bus replacement plan?
Motion to adopt the bus replacement plan.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And my final area of business is the Capital Projects Fund. The CPF, commonly known as in the business world for me, and this is a little bit hard to read, but again, it was in the newspaper. The capital projects is all the improvements. So my carpet plan, my technology plan, my paint plan, my roof plan, going out, any renovations, blinds on the windows, things like that, including equipment, things like that. And so I go 2014, 15, and 16, I do a three-year plan, and that's what these are. I put a quarter of a million dollars in fixed and mobile equipment. I put almost a half a million dollars in utilities, the maximum amount is by statute tells me, and it's about $480,000. Whether we receive that amount of money or not, that's what I ask for. Maintenance of equipment is just ongoing. We buy mowers, we go out, you know, this is where we do all of our operations work every year. So I always estimate a budget at 2.5 million, even though every year, they scale us back to 1.3 or lower. FYI, five years ago, our levy and our amount of money in this fund was 2.2 million. So we have been dropped by a million in what we can do to make things kind of look pretty. So we can't afford the paint, and sometimes we wax only one time during the school year instead of at each of the breaks. We have to be very fiscally responsible, and it's been very, very difficult. Half of the referendum has helped me pay for some of that maintenance of equipment. In the pool, and there's other maintenance things that are just ongoing, as you can imagine, with five buildings, a Hornet and Richmond Academy, an operations center, and all that going on, there's a lot of money that it takes to run the corporation from a physical plant perspective. We never received enough money to get by in here. And so one of the good things about getting 1.2 million in referendum is my transportation is fully funded at 900, and then the excess can go to maintenance of equipment and operation costs. So that's the three-year plan. I don't plan in here, I put in here, I didn't plan any major recon, you know, renovations, I don't plan any big projects, I don't plan any building. And you can see at the bottom line, 2.5, 2.5, 2.5. That's just as stable as can be. And they'll break us down and back us off to 1.3 million, 1.3 million, 1.3. And out of the 1.3, because of the tax caps, we'll be lucky to receive $600,000. And I know that's a sad, awful thing, no reason to dwell on it, it is what it is, and we're doing the best we can. So sometimes I come to you and talk to you about rainy day money, and I talk to you about how I'm transferring and using money from other funds, all of it stems from this part of the budget. It's a very difficult part of the budget. So you can imagine going from 2.2 million down to 600,000 in five years, how hard it's been for us to maintain some of our facilities. But that's my plan.
I have a couple comments. We are going to go around and find one of Brian's job tasks that he doesn't know why until right now. We're going to get standardized paint for all the buildings on the trim. That's a discussion we've had for a couple of years. So I'm not going to select that color trim, but I normally wouldn't have the board do that, but if any, I know Janice has a lot of skill, anybody else looking at paint, but we want to standardize that throughout the district. We have various colors in various buildings. We're also working on the new digital sign at the football field, middle school football field. We do have a sponsor for that that's going to help pay for that. So Brian and I have been working on that along with the other members. So those are some of the things. We're going to go out there very heavily and seek corporate sponsorships across the board. You know, we have a lot of improvements we need to make on our campuses. At the bottom line, when you go from 2.2 million down to, if we're lucky, 600,000. So we're going to go out, beg, plead, do whatever we can to have pathways to success for our kids. The other thing I want to emphasize, Tom keeps on talking about, we advertise high, we advertise high. The major reason we advertise high is because when we do the budget, starting back in May and June, we do not know our assessed valuation, okay? Because remember, our taxes is the assessed valuation, the value of all the property in the Beet Grove City Schools times a specific rate. And when you don't know the AV because it's not done yet, you have to advertise your AV low and then increase your levy as an estimate, because if we got lucky and our AV went way up, that would help us. But our AV dropped another $9 million. So we, Tom and I and Brian and more are working this first year on the budget. We always advertise at 300 million. If we get down to 300 million, then we're in really big trouble. But we're about 350 down from 521. So again, part of the reason we advertise, we always lowball your assessed valuation, you overextend your AV, because if your AV does shoot up, and you haven't done that, you won't get that money. So, and again, as Tom said, there's 1% property tax, it has no bearing on our property tax payers, but it's just the, it's the mathematical calculations you have to do for the advertisement. So, and again, finally, we'll have between 6 and 8 million in property tax, but we won't know that until all the bills go out and there's reconciliation of that. But that's kind of that advertisement and why we deal what we deal with that. At every school in the state of Indiana, if you look at all their budgets, they do the exact same thing, because that's what we've been taught to do. Lowball your assessed valuation, get your levy high, and then DLGF will take care of your budget with the true numbers, so. But that's the CPF plan.
Okay, if you want to close the hearing, the CPF plan, no questions?
Huh?
Do you want to open the CPF hearing? So we can.
Well, open it then close it.
Yep, okay. Open it and I'll take questions.
Motion to open the CPF hearing. Motion to close the CPF hearing.
Any other questions? Do you have any further questions, because I can go through, answer anything. I do also have, by the way, a 66-page document that goes through a very long history of every one of our own buildings. Every renovation that's taken place, it's a historical view. And that is actually, that 66-page document is actually the entire CPF plan, not just the summary. So I have that as a good document for you. If anybody wanted to inspect it, it's pretty good.
And most people don't know that Central Elementary started as the high school back in 1911.
Yeah, it's nice, every page has that entire dialogue of how, what the middle school, it's been changed over, changed over, added to, and South Grove, right? Had a huge addition, right?
But if you walk into the school, it looks brand new.
Maybe it's okay.
Okay.
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Motion to close the CPF hearing?
We need to vote on the motion to open first.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to close the CPF hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
So if there are any questions on it, I do suggest, since statutorily we did advertise it to be able to be passed today, I'll recommend that they go ahead and go for passing votes as well.
I can move the end up that 2014 CPF plan is presented and the resolution.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so. Dr. Keely, do you have some personnel updates?
Yes, I presented that to you, and the business update. If you have any questions, most of the employees listed on there are ECA, which means they're coaching. So we've gotten through the majority of our big hiring and things like that. And I anticipate really too much change over the past few quarters.
Any kind of a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I do want to make one clarification, in Tom's, it's not a motion as much as the business update. It lists Lauren Callis as a high school junior varsity basketball coach. She originally decided to take the job earlier in the year and has decided to move out of state. So we have a different person within that. Kristin Raker will be our JV coach, and Emily Ringham will be the JV coach. And Emily coached many years at our middle school, so she knows the players well. And they've already started conditioning for the upcoming season. So just a point of reference, some toxic materials.
Do we have anything for the operations update?
Well, you do ahead. Okay. We approve the personnel, right?
Right.
Okay, for operations update? Okay, I guess we need to make a motion to accept the donations of South Grove Intermediate School, Beet Grove Middle School, and Hornet and Richmond Academy.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oh, all right. Okay, I need a motion to adjust the school calendar end date as requested.
I motion that we approve to adjust the calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If I can make a quick comment about that, basically, as we looked at the calendar, we finish the school year on a Monday. Traditionally, we've had the Monday after Christmas as a workday for teachers. We have, in essence, bumped everything up, so God willing and no snow, we'll end the school year on a Friday. So basically, we'll get information out to the parents tomorrow or this week, tell them that Friday after Christmas is now a school day, and then we're just pushing everything on Monday.
Doesn't that make graduation quite a long time after that, May 30th?
Yeah, it does, but our concern is, if we do have snow days, having to make it up, it'd be nice if our calendar could end on a Tuesday or Wednesday, and then we have chances in there. So it does, but that's not the year some schools do come back and graduate. It gives a little bit more time. If a student falls short, they have a weekday to come back and make up rains to graduate. So it's not all bad. But it is on Saturday, remember, we used to have it on Sunday, we've now moved it to Saturday. One of these days, we'll have air conditioning in the gym to make it even more pleasant. So, but we're pretty fortunate.
I need a motion to adopt the 2014 to 2015 calendar.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there are several overnight and out-of-state field trips in our report. Can I have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve overnight and out-of-state field trips.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there are several fundraisers that are in our report. Can I have a motion to approve these fundraisers? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there something? Okay, does any board members have anything, success stories that they'd like to report?
I'll just make a comment that we've had a great start to the school year. We've had some overcrowding in the high school cafeteria, and Steve sent an email out to parents explaining that unfortunately, that's a traditional cycle because of our resource period, that you have to adjust the cafeteria size based on, well, you're going to take your class to A lunch, you're going to take it to B lunch, it takes us about two weeks. So we've cycled through that. I know the seniors, since I had a senior in high school, they loved going out to lunch. And as Steve said, they've been very responsible. My daughter made a comment to me, she goes, "It really makes it feel like a college setting." You know, between the block schedule, having four classes one day, four in the next, and really having that extended time during the day. I know she said that, and her friends have told me that have been out of her house, it's like, you get a chance to catch your breath in the middle of the day, and you feel like an adult. And I think the kids have been very, very responsible with that. So I know there's, we get some people out of concern about the cafeteria, but I think we've worked through that. Our numbers are rock solid. We still have parents on waiting lists to get in. You know, we have capacity set at every grade level. We've held on all out-of-district transfers until January. We will look at those numbers, at that point in time, we'll start calling those of a waiting list if we have openings. Right now, I can't tell you, we have a lot. You know, maybe a few in the junior, senior class, and here and there, but you know, as our principals have talked about, the ends are full, the buildings are full. I think it tells you the great thing. I think it tells you the great things that people want to come to Beach Grove City Schools. And any concern we have about having enough kids to keep our enrollment up, which helps with our budget, I think we're rock solid moving forward.
ADM this week is ADM?
ADM is Friday. And right now, we're looking at a plus 50 to 65 kids. You know, last week alone, we had a change of 10 kids. You know, we had 10 new kids who moved into the school district last week. And you know, we had some kids that showed up for the first time, you know, the third week of school, believe it or not. But as far as, you know, people moving in, we had 10 new students last week at various buildings throughout. So we'll have some change between now and Friday. And there is a second ADM date, which is February 2nd, and that will readjust our budget. So there is two ADM dates. But again, I think from my perspective, we've had a great start to the school year. And I put all that success back with our five-building principals that are in the audience. They're organized, they communicate, they get the message out. And we're off to a good start.
Okay. Can I go motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.